Okay, everybody, good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees April 27, 2020 Budget Adoption Meeting. Will everyone please salute the flag?
The allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States.
America.
To the republic which stands one nation.
Under God, one nation.
Indivisible, but never ending.
Justice, justice, and freedom.
Thank you. May I please call the roll?
You sound like robot.
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Trustee Lee. Mayor Luise.
I am present.
Present. Present.
Okay. Tonight, we have one public hearing. And that public hearing is to consider a proposed local law repealing Local Law Number Three of 2019, which authorized a year-ending 2021 budget to exceed the New York State tax cap. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second. Trustee Andino in favor. Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. Mayor Luise.
I am in favor.
In favor.
There's an echo, there's a delay here.
There's a delay, yeah.
David, anyone in the room? Any?
Delayed echo.
There are a couple attendees, if they'd like to speak, they...
Okay, yes, that's why I want to say, anyone in the public, this is your first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items.
Well, this is the public hearing you just opened.
Ah, that's true. Sorry. Jumping the gun, do we have any comments? Okay. Well, with that, I'm gonna make a motion to close this public hearing. Do I have a second?
So moved. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
Favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And at this time, that is, if anyone in the public would like to address the board on any agenda items. Okay. None dazed, so I'm gonna move forward on our resolutions, and resolution is number one, authorizing a proposed local law repealing Local Law Number Three of 2019, which authorized the year-ending 2021 budget to exceed the New York State tax cap. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
I think she might have lost contact.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
I am in favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the adoption of the fiscal year June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021, Village Budget with the following modifications. And what I'd like to do is to simply say that we reduced expenditures in this budget to the tune of $94,750. Those particular lines that were affected pertain to street maintenance, personnel services, part-time street maintenance, police department overtime, as well as capital expenditures. And before we go any further, will David or Brian please bring the public up to speed as to what this budget entails?
Yeah, just real quickly, I didn't want to say this, but our board members had a really interesting conversation on Saturday about the fake fair budget. And why we say that is, is because this budget, while it's a fair budget, it's a good plan going forward. It's really interesting what's going on out there, is that even when the moment this is adopted and June 1 rolls around, we know that we can't just go out there and spend money. We really have to look at a lot of these revenue lines, really have to go through each of these expenditures month after month, making sure we kind of stay on target. It's a whole new world out there, but this budget is kind of, it's a good plan in place for today, but I know that a week from now and a month from now, it's gonna have to be really looked at and really modified going forward. But I think it's fair in regards to what we have and what we're dealing with right now.
Thank you, David. So in other words, we're working with information we have available now moving forward. Okay. Would any of the board members like to comment on this time, or do you want to, would you like to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay. Well, may I make a motion to adopt the budget for fiscal year June 1, 2020 through May 31, 2021? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
I'm in favor as well. At this time, are there any board members? Please, at this time, if you'd like to make a comment, I will turn to Trustee Andino first.
Okay. As David mentioned, the budget process for the village, really like any other organization, doesn't end with the adoption of the budget that's in front of us. Instead, it's a living document that has to be monitored and amended and as needed throughout the year. And this holds true now more than ever, given the current crisis in the world, the country, the state, the county, and right here in our beloved Tocco. The COVID-19 pandemic is a public health and financial crisis that will touch us long after its resolve. Prior to the impact of this crisis, we had already been grappling with the fact that the delay of the hotel opening would result in lost tax revenue for the village. We were already looking at what the impact of our sewer and light infrastructure would be, as well as a reduction in the budgeted meter revenues. Within the last four to five weeks, we have been hit hard and we didn't see it coming. First and foremost, we have all been impacted in some way, but I want to acknowledge those who tested positive and are suffering with COVID-19, as well as those 962 people in Westchester County who lost their lives to this disease and their loved ones who are now left to grieve. Having said that, we as a board, along with David Burke, our village administrator and department heads, must also look at the financial impact of this crisis and continuously monitor our budget in the months and years to come and strategize for the future. We currently have no meter and permit revenue coming in, and getting things back up and running will take some planning. I'm really grateful that the village had a fund balance, a savings to fall back on, but we also have to look at the ways that we'll have to build it back up as we move forward. So I really want to thank all of the village leadership staff and staff, as well as the board, for the sometimes spirited discussions as we grapple to make tough decisions during a time such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Andino, very well said. Deputy Mayor Lang?
Yes. First, I want to start by thanking all the heads of the departments for their help in streamlining this year's budget. I just want to start by saying that this budget process is the most important thing we do as trustees in this village, and it's something I take very seriously. So in regards to this year's budget, we've diligently been working on it line by line and believe we put together a reasonable and fiscally responsible budget, all the while protecting our fund balance. We have put ourselves in the best possible position to fight the financial shortfall that Trustee Omira had just managed. We have been able to do this without layoffs and without cuts to services. Early in the process, myself and Trustee Lee suggested that we bond for as many capital expenditures as possible, knowing that we can take advantage of these low interest rates and even possibly refinance any existing loans that we may have out there currently. So our bond rating has just been increased, making now the best time to take advantage of these favorable interest rates. These efforts helped to lower taxes from our preliminary budget, and as a result, the tax increase would be just over half a percent, .67 to be exact. If I had it my way, and if not for this financial cloud hanging over our heads and our villages' unseen future, I would have dipped into the fund balance and made it zero. However, I pledge to continue building our fund balance to enable next year's budget to be as low and perhaps even lower. Once in a while, the unexpected happens, such as this virus. I want residents to know that I'm focused on keeping a lid on taxes during these difficult times, as so many families are just trying to get by. Furthermore, I've joined forces with the mayor and decided to take the $5,000 stipend I received and put it back into our local businesses. So quickly, just to recap, the budget is coming well under the tax levy. We've done this while maintaining the services we all come to enjoy, and best of all, without layoffs. We will continue to improve our infrastructure, such as our roads, sidewalks, and curbs, and the upgrading of our parks. We look forward to continue our advancement regarding environmental-friendly initiatives, as well as many other projects that are going on right now, that make Tocco a great place to live. And lastly, I just wanted to mention before I go, our condolences go out to our town councilman's family. As many of you know, we lost our councilman Glenn Belito, one of the most caring, gentle, and encouraging men I've ever met. To him and his daughter, we are so sorry. Also, the Solano family. Police Officer Anthony Solano lost his mother-in-law Joan Campan. Again, we are so sorry for their loss. And lastly, as Trustee Andino had mentioned at our last meeting, our thoughts and prayers are also with the family of longtime resident Tommy Logan. We are so sorry. Now, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lang. Trustee Howell, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody's mentioned, it's really probably been the most difficult budgeting exercise, maybe in the history of our village. We couldn't have anticipated this pandemic, but that's exactly why we need a reserve. Actually, fund reserves are meant to facilitate a short-term fluctuation in finances, and actually, what we have now is something much worse. So I would say that the fund balance, the reserve balance should never be zero, ever. It'd be a dangerous thing. So I'm so glad to, mostly to our administrator, David Burke, who worked diligently since he was hired to put that in place for us. If we did not have that, David, it would be tragic. So thank you for that, and for everybody who voted on the budget since then. So it's an unconventional time, and in an unconventional time, we can make unconventional decisions. Trustee Andino mentioned at the last meeting that we have different decisions we can make with our stipend that we get as trustees. So I think after the last meeting, we decided that those of us who would like to give it back to the village or not collect it this year, we have that option by writing a letter to David and Ryan and letting them know that. But we'll keep that on the budget, and it's important to keep that on the budget line because it's important to offer a stipend to the trustee position. For some of us, it may not be a make-or-break situation, but it's often used by people who take the trustee position to help offset a lot of the charitable events that we go to to support Tocco, you know, and a variety of different causes. So I think it's really important to offer that stipend to people, because we don't want people, only people to be trustees who don't need the stipend. So we'll keep it in the budget line because it's important. As Trustee Lang mentioned, we moved some things into a capital, some capital things into gear for looking at doing a bond in the future. And a couple of the other board folks have already mentioned that we, you know, we know we have to look at sewer repair and our traffic light system repair. In addition, we're also looking forward to the future to put money in there to do a new master plan, which is really critical to, something that we've been talking about for a long time. So we're looking forward to working on that. And then lastly, I just wanted to say, you know, I would have never anticipated that I would use my experience as a scientist in infectious disease in my position as a trustee of the board. And, you know, at the beginning of this, when it was clear in the data what was gonna happen, we had some spirited discussions, and I know I probably wasn't popular in saying things like, I think we should consider advocating to postpone the election. I was advocating for closing Eastchester Schools when Tocco's schools had been closed, you know, and then we had to make a difficult decision to close the parks. And I think it was probably the most, these were the most impactful decisions we made, postponing that election, and I lobbied heavily to our state and county representatives for that, and I am so glad that we did not conduct that. I mean, I think even what we've seen from the Wisconsin election, it would have just been a disaster for us. So I'm very glad to do that, and I think lobbying our state and county legislators makes a difference. And we're gonna ask them to do that again, because we're gonna need help from them for funding for this next village budget session. So, you know, we're all gonna be planning. It's important now that we start to even, that we start to think about what it's gonna be like to go back to a normal life. So the DPW, the police, village hall staff, library, and community center are all starting to think about that, and we're gonna need the help of the villagers. So we've done a great job so far, but safety is our first priority for the village. So I just wanted to encourage the village to stay engaged and to help us and as we hope to transition back to something close to normal. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Lee.
Okay, first off, I want to express my condolences to those who have lost a loved one during this pandemic. Also, if you're fighting the virus, I pray for a speedy recovery. As you know, this past Saturday, we were very productive on finalizing the budget. However, it's not a normal time right now. We are being hit emotionally, physically, and financially. This virus has caused numerous illnesses, has shut down our local businesses, and has our restaurants fighting to stay open, all within a few short months. As elected officials this time of year, working on the budget is the main priority, and now, with all that's going on, we need to help our residents and businesses more than ever. The budget is pretty solid at this time, and I have to say, we are very fortunate that we have a strong fund balance. We did not lay off any employees, which was a goal. However, we did have to do some cuts, a little here and there, from departments. I am sure the department heads understand, and I personally want to say thank you. And I also want to thank David Burke and Ryan Rueta for all your help. Without you guys, we couldn't have done what we've done. Also, I want, along with, I along with Deputy Mayor Lang suggested to remove capital expenditures from our budget and bonds for them at a lower interest rate, along with refinance old bonds into a lower-interest-rate bond, which would save on interest and expense. Furthermore, I have decided, along with Mayor Luise and Deputy Mayor Lang, to donate my stipend of $5,000 that I received from the village to local businesses to help them get on their feet. All these efforts, I have mentioned, helped lower taxes from the preliminary budget, and as a result, the tax increase will be .667%. My main goal as your trustee was to do all I can to help the budget be below the tax cap, and we have succeeded that as for now. I am so proud of our accomplishments, because we did without taking away all the wonderful things that we love about Tocco. Please join us in helping out our local restaurants, bakeries, and delis during this horrific time. Be well and stay safe, Tocco. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Lee. So now I come along, and it sounds like I copied notes from everybody that came through. Well, in my defense, I have it written down, so I could always prove it. But anyway, seriously, this past February, the New York State Controller issued an analysis via the Fiscal Stress Monitoring System regarding the village's financial condition. It's narrowing scope, and it measured the fiscal stress from a budgetary solvency perspective. And this analysis simply asked the question, does the local government generate enough revenues to meet expenditures? We received a no-designation score in two categories, which means there was no financial stress to the village, and innovative event efforts to increase revenue were providing positive results. Moody's just last week upgraded the village from an A2 rating to A1, some of those reasons being improvement to our reserves and an increased tax-based valuation. The last three months of this current budget, March, April, and May, will have seen an estimated loss in revenue in an amount close to $300,000. It is fortunate that we have a substantial fund balance that will be able to backfill this unanticipated loss due to COVID-19. The budget being presented tonight began at a tax cap of 2.55%, which translated $78,021 for the average homeowner assessed at $7,500. Mind you, we didn't have the virus at that time, but we did know, as was mentioned earlier, that we did have two serious things coming in our revenue line. So many serious issues were discussed by the members of this board as to how to mitigate the impact of today's current situation on village taxpayers, while also keeping an eye on future budgets. Tough decisions had to be made. An open position in DPW caused by attrition has not been backfilled. The hiring of part-time seasonal workers will be severely curtailed, and sidewalk repairs will be impacted. I applaud the entire board, who have dedicated their stipends back to the village and community as a show of solidarity with all the residents and business owners. I applaud all our village employees in every department for coming to work every day and continuing to provide services without missing a beat despite the virus. The focus was to maintain essential services and current full-time staffing levels. We have achieved that and managed to decrease the tax levy to 1.39%, which translate, as was mentioned earlier, which is a tax rate per thousand dollars of less than 1%. So in other words, the same owner that I mentioned previously will now be paying $28,078 in taxes to the village. Meanwhile, we still continue to maintain a healthy fund balance as of right now. However, the following months are filled with uncertainty. Will revenues begin to rise? Will Washington pass a stimulus package that will send money to villages and to help them recover from their financial losses? This budget may very well be revisited several times throughout the coming year with modifications being made, depending on our economic recovery. So in closing, I'd like to thank all our department heads for presenting sensible and financially sound budgets. Many thanks to our village treasurer, Ryan Rueta, for his hard work and dedication. And lastly, to David Burke for overseeing the entire budget process. And that's that. Let's bring us to miscellaneous business. And our next village board meeting will be May 11 at 7:00 PM. David, seeing as I'm still operating on the phone, do we have any members of the public or department heads in the room that would like to speak to the board, address the public?
There are members of the public that, if they'd like to speak, they should go ahead, I think.
Okay. Are there any members of the public in the room would like to speak? Make a comment.
Sure, Mike Dardano from Tocco. I have a question regarding this donation to the businesses. Is this, when you say donation, how's that gonna work? Are you gonna donate directly to businesses, or are you gonna purchase something, you take the money and then purchase something for yourself? How is that gonna work? I'm just curious. Or is it a direct donation, and how are you gonna pick what businesses you're gonna donate it to if you're gonna donate?
Are you speaking, are you asking me?
No, I think, I think what I heard Gina say, because I'm sorry, I had to, I'm late, but I think I heard Gina say she was going to donate to business, like you said last week, Greg, and then Danny said the same thing. So I'm curious how that's gonna work? Like, what do you mean by a donation?
Well, what we're doing is, I'm dedicating my stipend to the local restaurants here in Tocco.
So are you just gonna give them the money, gonna break it up by, like, to figure this 10 or 15 restaurants, and then just donate it to them directly?
No, it's going to be a two to three times a week that I will frequent those businesses and purchase food from those businesses.
All right. Well, technically, just to not to be a pain in the neck with semantics, but that's not really a donation in the true sense of a word. It's a dedication of that money that you're getting to the businesses, but it's not like a donation like you would to do for a nonprofit or something. So I think semantically, it's not really a donation, it's a dedication of that money.
Yeah. Mr. Dardano, you're absolutely right. That's why I believe what we said was, we decided to take the $5,000 stipend and put it back into our local businesses. I'm not sure who used the word donate, but put it back into the local businesses is ultimately what I'll be doing.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, you're absolutely right, Deputy Mayor Lang. The word is dedicated that I just used, not donate. And that applies to all the trustees. The trustees, I'll speak for myself. What I said was, I implore the entire board, who have dedicated their stipends back to the village and community.
Yeah. I'll be donating my stipend back to the village, and I will be still eating, you know, more than I should, out at the restaurants every month, Mike.
That's fine. No, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify, and you know what would be good, if you could? I mean, that might be a pain in the neck, but it would be great to, especially to report to the chamber, where you dedicated that money to. That would be, that would be nice, so we could tell the board of the chamber. Oh, by the way, X number of, whether it's dollars or who you dedicated it to, because that would be a nice, a nice thing to show the chamber and to show our businesses. We can talk about it like at our next meeting and stuff and going forward, so.
That's a great point, Mike.
Right? You know, Danny, you can say whoever it is, you know, whether it's, you know, and if you went to the florist or whatever, but if it's dedicated to the restaurants, they need that help, and just being able to keep telling us who they were would be, I think would be a good thing. Good for the chamber members, too. Be a good example for other government officials to see that having Omira and Renee dedicate it back to the village. If you guys decide you're gonna dedicate it to, you know, you're doing it for the restaurants, that's fine, and how you spent it, or who you spent it on would be great, so we could kind of promote that.
Again, I'm gonna speak for myself, Mike. I don't go out to eat in Tocco three times a week, nor do I go to Carvel on a regular basis, but I am now making a concerted effort to do those things, so.
And I'll make sure he runs more.
Yes, David.
I know, you better walk there, Greg, no driving.
You know, I mean, I'm going to Carvel. I just left House Qualley's this afternoon. Yesterday, one of these past days where it took the way, the day before that, a lot... Uh, yesterday, I, one of these past days where it took away, the day before that, Velagio's. These are things that normally in the normal course of my year, I would not be going to the, this many Tuckahoe restaurants within that week span. So.
Okay.
And again, I would much rather, I mean, I know that, uh, it's a struggle and I think that every bit of business they can get is a, is a big benefit to them. But anyway.
Okay. That's all. I just wanted to check that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mike, Mike, just to, um, to clarify, um, for me, I'm also going to be donating it back and I'll let David and Ryan know. Um, the way it's gonna work is instead of it coming out of the line, um, because, you know, to trustee Howard's point earlier, we don't want people to be discouraged by taking that out of the, the trustee and mayor stipend, I would call it, out of the budget line, um, because it's some, it's an, it's a small incentive and it also should, um, not be taken out because it's, it's not quote-unquote free work. It's service, but it's not free work and people should know that it's, it's a valued service. Um, I'm gonna donate it back, but I am also, um, and I'm, you know, I'm fortunate, thankfully, that I can afford to do that. You know, I, I don't, I can't speak for anyone else's budget at home, but I'm, I'm fortunate and I'm grateful that I'm able to do that and continue to increase my, my support into the economy of Tuckahoe. So, you know, I'm also going to be increasing, uh, my, my purchases and buying, uh, gift cards to give to people who I know could use them. Um, so again, I'm just saying that to say that I want to give back to our economy and help boost our economy, but also, you know, consider the residents and, and in solidarity to them, I want to give the money back into the village.
You know, when you all do that, if you wouldn't mind, you're not gonna go crazy because I know it's, it can be kind of a little bit, you know, odd, but I think it'd be kind of cool if, when, you know, when you're doing that as trustees and you want to take some pictures at, you know, supporting the local businesses, that would be wonderful. We'll share that on social media for the chamber. That would be very, uh, that would be a nice gesture to be able to do. You know, grab a picture of you guys and it'd be nice to do it, especially when it's, I know everyone does it when they're campaigning, but to just do it to support the businesses in a, in a supportive way, not because we're, so to speak, campaigning. I think would be wonderful and be a nice thing for us to, uh, share with the chamber members. So that's just something to throw out there if you feel like doing that.
If I think of it when I'm doing it, maybe. I can't promise.
All right.
Likewise. If, if the food's that good, take my picture later.
Yes, I have, I have made a couple of posts, you know, thanking some restaurants, but you know, sometimes you're just hungry, you get out of work and you just want to go eat.
I understand.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Anyone else from the public?
Mayor Luise, one thing we haven't talked about, but we should probably make mention of is, you know, April is also a time when, um, people get reappointed to the different boards we have. Um, that won't be happening right now because, uh, the elections postponed and we, uh, you know, the guidance that's been given to us, um, is to wait for those appointments until, uh, the new board is elected. I'm gonna present that to folks.
Thank you. We still don't know. We're still waiting on Albany to give us a date for the village elections. So as soon as we get it, we will, I am sure, have it up there on all those social media websites.
Yes, you guys stuck with me and Danny for a while longer.
Yep, that's right. And vice versa. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board? Okay. Well, I think, I want to thank, um, everyone for, uh, for tonight. I'd like to thank, uh, my colleagues on the board for their hard work on this budget. And again, thank everyone out there in the village and please, everyone be safe. Please comply with the, the guidelines that are promulgated by the governor. They're working. Numbers are starting to go down. They are going down, but let's keep it that way. So, uh, once again, we'll see you back here at our next village board meeting on May 11th at 7:00 PM. And with that, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second, that.
Good night, everybody. Good night, Tuckahoe. Be safe.
Good night, Tuckahoe.
Good night.
Be safe.
Good night. Take care. Bye-bye.
All right, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.